Hey, I'm ready to step in.
I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Lemmonster School Committee. Today is December 3rd, 2018. That's our place, so will everyone please rise to say his pledge of allegiance? And the flag is over here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
So I know Sue's not coming tonight, and Mindy's not coming, and I don't know about me. We do have to walk.
All right, I'm just gonna read our mission statement. The committee represents the needs of all Lemmonster Public Schools students and places their interests above all others. We will exercise leadership, adhere to our protocols, and base our decision upon a reasoned assessment of all available information. We will advocate for each of our schools and support high-quality public education in Lemmonster. Having said that, we'll open up our open forum. If anybody would like to address the committee, please come up to the microphone and state your name and address. Again, if anybody would like to address the school committee, please come forward. And one last final time, if anybody would like to address the committee, please come forward. Having no one coming forward, we'll move on. Superintendent, any communications today?
There are no communications this evening.
Okay, how about a superintendent's report then?
Sure. Well, happy December. December 3rd, I have no idea where the time is going, but it is flying. And we have 14 days left before the winter break, and I have to say, the schools are so busy. Every day, there's something going on. So if you look to our calendars, and I've asked parents to keep checking in with their child's teacher and the secretaries to make sure they don't miss anything. It's been nonstop. This coming Wednesday is a half-day of school. The temps are getting colder and colder. So if anybody has an alternative dismissal plan, please just notify the school. We don't want anybody not able to get into their homes or having access. Breakfast and lunch always is served on half-days, but this Wednesday, the 5th, dismissal will be on a half-day schedule. Just a huge congratulations to the Lemmonster High Theater, the cast, the crew, the supporters for their performance this past weekend. It was outstanding. The talent that these students demonstrate every single performance, people, the breath you could hear come out of their chest. It's amazing. I'm telling you, we're gonna see these students on Broadway someday. It was fantastic. So if you couldn't make it to this one, they promoted two future musicals coming out, so you just have to see them together. It's wonderful. So kudos to them.
I'm just gonna interrupt. The next one is March, and then one after that is May, that their next performances are.
It's worth it. It's worth it. Little, big, all of us, we were all in attendance, so it was fantastic. On a serious note, I have asked that not only staff, but families and community members sort of ramp up conversations around social media and students' usage of what they put out there. Oftentimes, our children, they just don't understand the impact of a message, or a joke, or a picture, and the school department investigates every single incident. And sometimes, there are negative consequences for something that students didn't think was anything serious. So we need to start those conversations. It's not a one-and-done. It's a constant, constant conversation, just to help them navigate social media and put it to use in a positive, useful forum. We contact parents when anything surfaces. We do have our SROs involved and administration, but we're trying to sort of put things to rest, but every incident does get reported and investigated thoroughly. And in front of you tonight, I'm very excited. Each one of you has an invitation. And this is an invitation to participate in our social-emotional initiative, and I say whenever and wherever. I'm very fortunate to participate in some high-quality professional development around social-emotional learning, and it is in the forefront in education. And right now, we are in the practicing stages, and there's three quick, helpful hints. And the first one is, take a deep breath, and sometimes let your shoulders fall down. Give yourself time to react and be proactive instead of reactive, and it's amazing what 15 seconds of clean air will do for you. But just to stop, be in the moment, and make sure we know what our audience is. The second one really stands out to me, it's to ask, what is good about today? You know, so often, we always say, "Hi, how are you? Good. How are you? Good." Very robotic, and within three seconds, we said we greeted each other. The next question you should say is, so what's good about today? Just stopping people in their tracks, saying, "Oh, so you're really invested or interested in me. Let me find something positive to say." There's something always good that can come out of even some negative experiences. And the last one, and we're actually practicing this at MAG, what am I grateful for? If I can't say it out loud, I'd like to ask people, what are you grateful for today? And I was told that it better be Chris Silverman. And I have, I will affirm today, I am very, very grateful for my Christine Silverman, who puts my head on straight on a daily basis, and even others. If you want a truth sandwich, go see your Chris Silverman. So these are just some of the things that we're practicing with staff, with students, with families. They're easy techniques, but until you stop and really think about it, like a deep, like take a deep breath, if you really have to train your body how to breathe, sometimes 15 seconds, just like even right now, I can feel my shoulders are up here when I want them to be down here, and it's...
I have that effect on everybody.
I was gonna say. Ta-da! So we're gonna take a deep breath. So this is whenever and wherever you can contribute, but these are the skills that we're trying to instill in our learning community, so welcome to our initiative. And thank you.
That's wonderful, and I think it's an important lesson for not only the students, but certainly the adults as well.
Everybody, everybody, especially at this time of year.
Yep, very active.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, superintendent. We're gonna move forward with our presentation. We have creative choices up first. Come on, Mindy.
One of the hardest-working girls we have.
I can't get my deep breath.
Okay, deep breath, 15 seconds, right? And I'm gonna ask you, what are you grateful for?
Creative and choices.
She is. I am grateful for creative choices. So thank you, Paula, for inviting me here tonight. We're just gonna go over some of our creative choices. Many of you may not know, we have five sites, Pre Street, and then the four elementary schools. And we offer a summer camp, eight weeks in the summer, before and after school. We also offer vacation camps during February and April, and care on half-days, professional development days. I did provide you with information on the tuition. I'm happy to say that our revenues are steady, and over the past 12-plus years, we haven't had to increase our tuition. I did provide you with information in regards to our summer programming. I know that there was a presentation about that, but our summer numbers were really good this summer. In this school year, we continue to increase our numbers across all schools. There's a total of about 221 families that come before school there throughout Lemmonster. Their schedules do vary, but enrolled is 221 students. And then after school, we have about 370 students enrolled. Again, it does vary what days they come. They have to come a minimum of two, so...
Could I ask a question on the fees? So for the tuition, is the summer camp just a one-time fee for the entire summer camp? And are the before and after school for the whole year, for the semester, per week? What, how does that break down?
So the summer camp is weekly, $175.
Each week?
Each week.
Gotcha.
As well as the before, after, and before and after school.
Okay, so those are all weekly or all...
Those are all weekly, yeah.
I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah. And the vacation camp as well. And we usually offer a four-day vacation camp, because there's always a Monday holiday. This school year, we were able to purchase home book carts for all of our sites, and we're using them to help support our students, using the Symphony Math of Lexia during our Homer Club. We also put in key pads for all of our elementary schools that needed them. Some schools, I know Pre Street didn't need them, but we were able to do that for the safety of our children. So the doors are locked in the mornings, so teachers can still come in, and our building is locked for our students that are there during early mornings and late nights. And I guess our ongoing expenses are our salaries. We have some staff training that we do. We have enrichment clubs that we offer throughout the school year and summer camps. Our program for snacks through Chart Wells is an ongoing expense, as well as our office and program supplies. And we do pay a week, excuse me, a monthly rate for our office at the MAA Galler's Building. And then in the summer, we have our field trip costs, as well as our busing, and we are able to, which we are very grateful for, our participation in our Chart Wells lunch and breakfast program. So that's a great addition to our summer program. And then we also, we, for our custodial staff, we pay some overtime for that, as well for use of the building and our building utilities they charge back to the school.
Nova, what type of field trips do you...
We go everywhere. So we always are trying to look for new things. This year, we went, I know the middle school has always gone to Canterbury Lake Park, but I was kind of hesitant all these years ago, but we go there, the ecotarium, the aquarium, science museum, after tour, like a land. We just go everywhere.
Were you with us when we started the program? You came right after, right?
I started in 1998, so I worked in the school.
With the recreation department, started the program, and then it was just, you know, we couldn't charge enough to make the program work, because it was free. So we had to sort of offset it with other costs, but at the time, we were just looking to get the program going, and now the program's really going. I mean, we started with eight kids, and then 20, and then it just got to the point where it's this big operation here. And so there is a cost to doing business. I think you explained, you know, justified the cost and why we have to charge, you know, that money, but it's a good program, and, you know, we offered it just to get it going in the rec department, but it's for a lot of families, more and more, to working families, and moms, and dads, whatever situation might be, there's more of a need for it. So it's a good source to have. I mean, if you don't, it provides a lot of sort of logistics for families, but what are we doing? So we can't offer those days on like snow days and...
No, the building's closed on snow days, so it wouldn't be an option for us to...
Because, you know, that's the biggest thing, is parents just, come time, you know, the schools cancel or delay, it's all I hear is, you know, my family's 20 minutes from here, hour from there, I'm not sure what to do, where to bring them. And we've even thought of opening up the, you know, have the recreation department open up one of the facilities so that we could let kids come in for the day, but again, there's a cost associated with that as well.
Do you still go to the vineyard?
I, we do not go to the vineyard.
No, only because one time I was on vacation there, and I ran into Oliver.
You've got a lot to be grateful for.
So the former director, Eric Oliver, who's one of my really good friends, I do, I do visit the vineyard, but we used to go to the vineyard. I think our numbers are much, they're larger, much larger than they were. It was a great trip, but yeah.
Yeah, I go to Salisbury. I watch the... At George's Throw.
We're starting to work with the rec department in offering swimming lessons during the summer, because some of our kids are, they need to get stronger before we go to the beach.
Start at Walden.
Yes.
Slowly, slowly. Do we have anybody still on a waiting list? Because I know we started there at JA, our numbers at JA were off the chart.
We do have students on the waitlist at Johnny Appleseed, and I know we discussed before that there's, you know, there's lots of students at this school, but we use the cafeteria, so space is an issue for us, and we are able to use the classroom at times when there's meetings or what, some stuff going on in the cafeteria, but to use the teachers' classroom every day, I think it would be inconvenient. But yes, we do have a waitlist.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody else have any other questions?
What's the, you know, you were saying, well, there are times you can't like have usage of rooms. What is the most amount of kids that you can have? I guess basically, I'm looking for sustainability. What do you look for the future?
So I, I want to take as many as we can. So 123 is what we have in goal at Johnny Appleseed currently. I started off saying 80 was the max number, and it's hard to turn people away, and so as long as we can use space and the administration at the buildings are allowing us to give us space, I don't really know a max number.
Is the gym at JA used in the afternoon at the school?
Yeah, we use it in the afternoon.
So that's not an availability thing?
We do, oh, we use it, too.
Okay, because you said you have the cafeteria.
We use the cafeteria. They allow us, we separate the kids, because we have something called choice time in the afternoon, so they can choose between four different activities. So we use the, we try to separate them in the cafeteria. There's a TV in the hall, some of the hallways we use for our Just Dance, or we, we do use the gym outside when night's out. So we do try to separate them, and then we have some staff that are now teachers for the district that used to work for Creative Choices that let us use their room, so...
I was just trying to see if there were other spaces that, you know, routinely used to increase the...
We're spreading out slowly, yeah.
I guess it comes, please forgive me, I...
No, that's okay.
The question, you know, the reason why, it's selfishness on my part, I admit it. I was asking you, how many people, how many kids do you think you bring in? The unsaid question was, how much money do you look to be able to make? Because if you're bringing kids, you're bringing in money.
Right.
So what's the, what's the ideal, ideally, versus what you can't, what you can do?
Ideally?
Ballpark, do you look for, is there something that you're looking out for that, you know, you want to attain?
I think at this point, Ron, it's sustainability.
Yeah.
Right, sustainability, but how much, how much money?
It's just meeting their costs, yeah.
Right, but how much money are you looking, would you like?
So if I bring in more children, I have to bring on more staff, so it's kind of, it's relevant in a way, more food costs, more...
Well, I'm just asking.
So I would say, I know our Pre Street School is small, and if it's the building, it's always been really small, but 50s would be the minimum that I would think would be, and then, yeah.
Then there are...
Yeah.
Because I'm sure it's all based on supply and demand.
Yeah.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mindy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, doing a great job.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, we're moving on to elementary specialized programming, review group.
Evening, everybody.
I'm good.
All right, Ned, so what are you grateful for today? The air in your lungs.
My health and welfare.
They do, they, they, thank you.
What else matters at the end of the day?
Bottom line, okay?
What matters?
So we're starting with the elementary program? So Paula asked us to look at our elementary schools and how we're doing specialized programming, specifically for some of our students that are in our SSC autism program and life skills.
Ned, can you just, I think when we're having these conversations, we all understand sort of what's happening.
Sure, yeah.
Just like creative choices, not everybody understands it, so just back up a second and sort of explain it, so people that might be in the audience are watching on TV.
Absolutely, thank you, man, I appreciate that. So, you know, in addition to serving all kids, we also have specialized populations of services for kids that really need a little bit more heavy-duty servicing. So one group of students are those with social-emotional concerns, which is social-emotional learning and everything we're talking about here tonight at the school committee. Next group is students with autism, and of course, we know with autism, we have a continuum of services and a continuum on autism, right, from very mild to very involved, and our school district in district serves a lot of different kids. And then our life skills programs is for those students that are multiply handicapped. They may have a range of challenges to face every day, and again, we try to educate them closer to homes. That's basically the three populations we're talking about. So one of the things we're trying to look at in terms of the fall elementary schools is, are we serving our kids the best way possible? And we've always tried to look at educating kids as close to their homes as possible. Unfortunately, because of the complexity of these programs, many times, we have to have them at different sites and consolidate it. So Paula asked me to facilitate this group that would be made up of the four elementary school principals, the two special ed coordinators that serve those levels, the assistant superintendent, and also Jen Monday will be with us initially. And really, the task is, is how well are we doing what we're doing? Are there things that we should be doing better? Are there kids that we're leaving out? Are there certain programming that we might be looking at, that we should be looking at? So that's really the basis of it, with the hope that we're gonna start, actually, our first meeting's gonna be on December 13th, and working through the rest of the school year, hopefully ending around March, is really develop some ideas to figure out how to best serve all kids. We'll be broadening our focus, and we're bringing in different groups, for example, psychologists and counselors and teachers of all the specialized populations, so we can get feedback from them with some of the ideas that we start generating. And hopefully, sometime in March, we're April giving Superintendent Deacon some ideas and a report, so that she can present that and figure out what would be the best, next best step. I would tell you very frankly that we don't see any changes coming for the next school year, so this is not a rushed process, first of all. I mean, this is something we really have to look at. And also, in this group, we're gonna be looking at how we're doing staffing and how we're deploying staff, because we've actually added, as you guys very well know, a lot of staff members over the number of years to serve our kids in districts. So we really wanna take a step back and say, hey, are we doing what we should be doing, and is there something we should be doing better? So that's really the basis of what we're gonna be doing, and we're looking forward to starting the group on the 13th.
Are you going to touch base with maybe some of the stakeholders, the parents of some of these populations, to get their feedback?
Right, we're gonna be working with the CPAC to ask them, one part of the focus groups. And we're not sure how we're gonna do the focus group sets, whether it's gonna be job-specific or if it's gonna be more open, we're just not sure, but I'm gonna let the rest of the group drive that decision. They're really, there is a facilitator for them at this point.
And then my other question is, are you going to be looking at all, at whether some of these programs can be sort of instituted in all schools, so kids can go to their neighborhood school as opposed to being, you know, and I get that, you know, if you only got three kids, you don't want a program in, you know, three different schools, you're gonna have one program to service those three kids, but are there populations where we could, you know, sort of...
Sure, that's what the group has really kind of said they wanted to look at, and also, too, are there ways to streamline it better so that we can serve more kids in each school? So maybe it's not doing programs per se, but how we approach the teaching. It's really kind of very open-ended right now, we really want the group to be able to have a chance to look at, how do we best do this? Because as we know, it's changing, it's complex, and we wanna make sure that we can serve all our kids in the best way possible.
Great, okay. Does anybody else have any questions, Nova?
You asked one of my questions. The other is, are we, are we kind of maybe top-heavy in certain schools that they have a lot of programs with a lot of kids there, and, you know, maybe we need to even that out?
So the quick answer is yes, but when you say top-heavy, it really indicates that...
I don't mean in personnel, because we always...
No, 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 I'm not even looking at it that way. I'm thinking in terms of level of need, like, for example, Johnny Appleseed has the life skills program, and that's really very involved students and families, and you really spend a lot of time, they're two different levels there. So whereas there might be more kids being served in a different school, sometimes the level of need is different. So that's why we're doing this committee, really, is to really sit down together as a group and say, hey, how can we best do this?
Are you seeing that Lemmonster is getting more and more students that need special programs?
Well, you know, I've said it lots of times, the level of need five years ago that we were serving in our industry programs is not as, we're serving, the kids that we're serving in our, some of our more involved kids, students that we're serving now, would have been outplaced five years ago. We're working, but the kids that are in outplacements, they have really complex needs. So it always changes, so the more piece really is in the area of our autism program, because more kids are being diagnosed with autism, and in our social-emotional program, more kids are, identifying kids earlier and younger that have some significant issues that not only that outside therapists and doctors and family counseling is working on, but also in school, too. So there is a depth and a breadth to it that's pretty, yeah, pretty amazing, you know. But our professionals are doing a great job, they really do, every day, our counselors, teachers, aides, parents, I mean, they're just amazing, so...
Thank you.
Thanks.
Does anybody else have any other questions or comments?
Ned, one of the things is, we're gonna be looking at space needs throughout the schools, and it looks like as I go through the schools, and this is not unusual, this is every school district, so it's not just us, is we sort of find places as there are more needs, and then we kind of expand the programs, and we just sort of find spaces and make them work, rather than to really look at a way where we can better serve. And I think we, maybe that part of the committee can sort of begin to think about that, because that's one of the questions that we will instruct the company that gets hired to look at our space needs, is are we adequately providing the space that's needed, rather than, there's an empty room or a half a room, let's squeeze three or four kids in there. And that's not good for the student, nor for the educators and the aides. And the second thing is, pretty interesting, is I traveled through the state in other school districts, and not all gateway cities or urban communities. You know what the number-one answer is when I ask them what their biggest issues are? What do you think it is?
Special ed.
Special ed?
Yeah, special ed, I mean, it's everywhere, ESL, and I would think when you go to a really rich community, a really wealthy community, it wouldn't be the case, but I'm amazed, because I thought, I thought I was gonna hear something else, but every single time, it's those two issues. So, I mean, we're in, and I think, and I think the other way to look at it is, do you ever watch how many transportation companies there are on the highway in the morning? There's almost more of them, and so they're moving different parts to provide different services, and even wealthy communities can't provide that level of service, so they have to sort of move their students to where they are more specialized in certain areas, and nobody knows that better than you, but it's just not here. It isn't like autism has just grown here, on Mr. Massachusetts. It's throughout the, you know, the system, and I think we do, we all in education do a better job, and not only in diagnosis, but then providing the services later on. It's just something that the state has to begin to understand, as they do their budgeting every year, they have to understand that these things are changing, and more money has to be put towards these areas, because it's a growing trend everywhere, and I think that's where school committees need to get together, and the senators and the state rep, everybody needs to get together and say, this is not, this is not third or fourth on the list of priorities, this is not going away.
That's right.
You know, and, but it isn't being adequate to get addressed, is what it is, because it's just dropped down on the school system, to, in the cities, to try to fund it all, and it's just impossible at this point.
But you hit me on the head with the space issue, because we really do, oftentimes, it's kind of a knee-jerk reaction, and unfortunately, you know, here's some space, or, well, let's make some space. We're really good in Lemmonster at making space.
We're not unique to that, and I find that the same thing. I'm like, you know what, I don't feel as bad, but still, we're gonna have an opportunity to look at what those spaces are, really, what space do you need?
That's right.
To adequately provide, you know, the level of education that you want to be able to do, rather than, oh, let's, there's some space, let's make it work.
That's right.
So we're not unique in that way, but there'll be an opportunity to look at that.
Absolutely, sure. Absolutely, we'll be doing that, thank you.
And the people do work hard, all the staff works really hard, and it's, you never know, I mean, one, two students can throw off the budget, but the reality is, if they move here, they're, you know, we're obligated to provide that service, just like we would anybody else, and we don't know why they move here. It could be for a number of reasons.
And we've had a great history of serving all kids, no matter where they come from, so that's really great.
Right, exactly.
Great, thank you very much. Great. Thank you very much, Ned.
Thanks, Ned.
We're going to move on to the LCE review committee update, so I think that's you two next.
Um, here I am again.
Come on.
So, so LCE, um, we sent you a little bit more comprehensive package because we've moved on a little further with that group. Um, we have Sue Cola and Ronnie is, uh, school committee members and doing a great job with us. Um, group is, is really deliberating a couple of different things. They're, they're looking at, you know, what's the viability of LCE? And if we establish, and all of these will be recommendations to, to Superintendent Deacon and obviously to you guys at some point. Um, and then if viability is established, what does it look like? You know, how do we evolve LCE? Are there ways that we can be looking at other programming in the city and the school department that makes sense to start to consolidate? Or maybe not? We don't know. And then the third question, the essential question we're looking at with this group is, um, you know, where's it go? Where do we have it? And coming back to space again, right? You know, how do we continue on with the space? Uh, we've had some great conversations thus far, um, not only looking at LCE, but, um, we've had, we had two great, uh, presentations from the high school, looking at the credit recovery program and then looking at all the other specialized programs within the context of the high school. So that was great for the group to see how similar and different everybody is. And, and a lot of things going on with LCE are going on in the high school, vice versa. So is there some common ground we can look at? So our next meeting really, uh, in, in December, our next meeting is going to be looking at really the idea of viability. And we've been sharing data in every meeting and the committee has been asking us for more data and more data, so we just keep working through that with the assistance of many folks in the school department. Ultimately, we look to be finished sometime in March again to present our, uh, findings to Superintendent and then moving forward from there, looking at, uh, what the best way to do it and her recommendation to you guys. So, uh, it's been a great group. Um, you know, we've, we've, I've been serving as facilitator. Carrie Duff as the principal is really the technical advisor. We're really trying to have the group work together as opposed to one or two members really trying to run the show. So it's really worked out very well and a lot of people have, um, expressed, uh, very real good interest in the group. So we're, we're happy with what's going on and hopefully something to you sometime in March in terms of, uh, recommendations.
Does anybody have any questions from this?
Ned, um, is, one of the things that would be helpful, we're going to have to sort of vote on another lease or an extension of the lease or a new lease. One of the things that would be helpful for me that we, you know, last time it looked like, oh, the funding was in place, we're in good shape, and then later on we found out, you know, we signed off on a lease that probably shouldn't have because we ended up with budget problems. And, um, the total cost of the program, I, I think what I'm looking for in, in advance or as the process moves forward, so we don't have this one night conversation about it is, what is the cost to run it? And then let's just say, for, for example, we sit here and we decide in March or April before it's time to sign another, uh, contract, that, you know, we feel that money would be better used putting into the existing programs or into special needs or other areas that we're a little deficient on. I, I guess my question would be, other school systems, what, what, what's an alternative to this alternative, I guess is the question. So if we don't do this, so we have something to compare it to. So if we don't do this, what are the other programs that schools, because they all, anybody has one, a program similar, but they all call them different things. So what, what would those be? And so we'd have something to compare against our program. And then we could sort of balance out and prioritize based on next year's budget. Is this something that we could continue to fund? Or have things changed in other areas that we need to sort of, you know, if the state isn't going to help with additional funding next year and they're going to say, well, you know, we've got other areas that we have, mass health and these other things that we have to put our money towards.
Sure.
Then we have to prioritize too because it's another commitment for another lease.
That's right.
And I know the superintendent was looking for other places that maybe we could locate, maybe that would reduce the cost and make the program even worth it. But, um, I certainly, you know, still out on the whole thing because I don't have enough information. I think it would be helpful at least for me and I think the rest of the committee to know, what is the true cost of it? And I, and I think sometimes when you ask those questions, people in the program or, or administer the program or the teachers in the program thinks, we don't think it's a good program. We do. But I, I want to understand that before I sign off next time.
And I think it's helpful to maximize, you know, whatever if we are leasing something, whether we have another different kind of alternative school at night or, you know, make better use of our space. Um, I think, you know, one of the things that we could have that toughened up, happened up was that we were hoping to bring people, students from the outside who tuition in and helps sustain the program if not completely sustain it. Um, so that never got off the ground, so hopefully you'll be taking a look at that as well because that was one of our, uh, sort of expectations that haven't been met at this point.
Sure. And, and again, I agree with you one hundred percent, all of you. Um, the, the group really is very open-minded. Um, you know, one of the concerns when you have a group coming together like we did is there'd be a lot of territorialism in, you know, high school versus LCE. It's not that way at all. And I want to assure you that. It really is about gathering data, looking at what we're doing, celebrating some of the successes, where are some of the challenges, and can we meet these challenges in a more consolidated way that is cost-effective and serves as many kids as possible and makes sense for our district? So that's kind of where we're at at this point. So hopefully we'll have something to you.
That's great.
We also grounded the work from the beginning in a set of norms. And one of the most important norms that we have listed and it's posted is that whatever's best for the district is going to guide this work. So we're going to look at the whole institution and how this fits into our needs and where we're at. Um, so we keep coming back to that focal point, so it grounds us. And so that territorial piece hasn't, or happened.
Yes. And then we have the additional space that's there that we thought we were going to grow into. And I'm, I'm assuming at some point the landlord's going to say, well, I've been kind of holding this space back, thinking you're going to grow into it. And then maybe if that doesn't work out, is there room, an opportunity for this building, the CTEI to sort of expand into there? And then maybe that, the, the new school choice, people at school choice into that helps us sustain, sustain this program at the LCE, the two together. I don't know the economics of it, but I definitely want to be more prepared when, when time comes. So your work and the committee's work is sort of vital at this very key point. It's like at the critical time.
We'll get it to you as quickly as we can when they're out there with the deliberations, for sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
So now we're going to move on to the city agreement?
So we are working. I sent out an email to all the departments last week. They're in the midst of updating the, um, information. I think what we're working on is, um, last year's plus an increase. So they are moving as quick as they can, but they keep getting sort of sidetracked. We just got, uh, notified about a, uh, some money for reimbursement from the federal government for last year's storm, and that's got a due date on it. So, um, everybody got an email last week saying, get this information in as fast as you possibly can. If they're going to be working late or weekends to do so. So I hope to have some information. Now, remember, this wasn't just a, this wasn't just the amount of money that was spent on , uh, chargebacks. There were six, seven pages of questions in there that all have to be answered in the departments that are, you know, the comptroller's office is to pass through. But each department that is sending us this information has a list of questions that they have to, you know, sort of document. So that's probably what's taken the most amount of time. So they're, they're working on it, but they're also working on, um, federal money that we're getting, um, some bidding items that need to be prioritized in the school department. So every day is a, um, ongoing priority. So they're moving as quick as they can.
Nona?
Um, Mayor, I, I, I'm thinking we're speaking of two different things. The city agreement is the agreement that you asked us, you and John Richards asked us to put together back in September, and we, we've sent it to you.
Uh huh.
Um, I think what you're talking about right now is the chargebacks, the, the amount of chargebacks for this year, that, I think that's different than the city agreement.
Are you, were you just describing the charges, documenting the charges for FY eighteen or the, you meant for FY nineteen?
Both. So everything that you sent us, asking for the backup on it, and the city's agreement for, um, twenty, fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. That's all kind of bundled into one.
Do you have an estimate of?
Um, I want it tomorrow. I want it tomorrow because honestly, there's so much more, I mean, there's so much coming down the pike that needs to get done and I'm going to lose people for vacations and people that have accumulated time and need to sort of take time off before they lose it at the end of the year. So I'm pushing to get it all done, um, trying to get that, you know, the whole E-rate thing done and all of that done before I start to lose people, you know, if anything's required for bidding or anything else. So we're moving quick as we possibly can. There are just so many projects coming through the door and they all, each person that comes through, it's a priority. Everybody comes through and it's, it's the highest priority. So we're moving as quick as we can. The other thing is, it doesn't, it doesn't change anything. I mean, you know, if, it, like, say, if there's a chargeback, like for the DBW, not only it's seventy-four thousand dollars, the actual costs are much higher. But even if you added it in and said, here's the real cost, it isn't going to change the budget process, it's just going to move the lines around. So if your chargebacks are less, it doesn't change anything because you're so far over net school spending, it doesn't really change anything. You know what I'm saying? It's not like it's going to change the budget or anything.
Right. So we have to document properly for our end of year report, which of course, as you know, was due September thirty.
And that's what we're working on now so we can get that year-end report in before the end of December is really what, when it needs to be submitted and, and signed off. So all of this has to be done in the next three weeks. Certification of the free cash, end of the year report, we're missed, in the midst of the audits. So there are like six or seven things that are on, on top of everything else that everybody's doing, are, this is on top of that. So it's, it's, we're moving as quick as they can. And I have a meeting, um, tomorrow with some of the finance people and with all of the projects they're working on to try to get them to move this thing along. After certify the tax rate, that all has to happen. All of these things need to happen in, you know, in the, in the fall. So we're getting at the end of some of these things that, uh, tax rate should be certified by the end of this, two weeks. So that'll be done. So that was a lot of work that has to be done to get that point. And then the year end, so we can close everything out between all departments, so we can get free cash certified, all of that has to happen. And we got just a couple of weeks to get it all done.
I mean, once we have the city agreement, isn't it usually fairly similar from year to year?
Yes.
Well, we've asked for something very different for this time.
Well, it's going to...
Probably one agreement per year, right.
It's going to be different this year because, uh, what, what I found is that most departments were just basically, because it doesn't, it doesn't change much, is basically what everybody's doing is turning on what they did last year in the year before. And that's why you end up with a DBW report that's, instead of going itemizing every school and with the cost of plow and sand and all that, they just come up with a generic, it's seventy-four thousand dollars. Well, when they went back and looked, it's much higher than that. In some cases, it could be double. So it doesn't matter to us, but in, 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 I guess it matters to you. So we, everyone's going back and looking at what their actual true chargebacks are. So whether we change the numbers or not, doesn't matter to me, but at least everyone will know what the true costs are and where the chargebacks come from and where the backup is for. Workmate's comp and all of that.
I think we're just trying to be transparent so that if anybody has any questions, it's all right there.
That's why I asked.
End of the year report.
All the departments to go back and look at what the real true costs were, are for the cost that, you know, are, are supposed to be charged back. Whether they do or not, doesn't really matter to me. I mean, it's, the DBW says it's seventy-four thousand dollars, but the true cost is a hundred and thirty, it doesn't matter. I mean, we're so far over net school spending.
Some of that depends on whether we have lots of snow or early end, you know? So that varies.
This is, both the state and the auditor requested that we have those actual numbers and the correct documentation.
Right. And we'll get it all. And again, the most important thing is the year-end report and getting free cash certified. There are a number of projects that are, you know, every year we need to get going on and, you know, so certifying. The tax rate is the most important thing because if you don't, you can't send out the tax bills and that just, um, that just, you know, creates another difficulty in itself. So there's a lot going on this time of year and they're working on it. I know they are. I know every department I talked to is, is working on it. They're moving as quick as they possibly can. And again, everyone has so much time, they could probably take time off from, very few people have used their vacation to try to get these things done. So, but at some point, I have to have them, they're either going to move the time off or they're going to have to take it. So I'm hoping they choose to.
I mean, I guess hopefully going forward since our reports due by the end of September, that we can get this information earlier and then we don't have to worry about them being sort of backlogs and trying to take vacation and trying to do the other side things.
Well, year-end is, is due in September, but we don't know what the, who closes out with encumbrances, whether there's money to, to be used in the encumbrances, whether or not there's actually a purchase order for the encumbrances, whether they actually spend the money on that. So it's a lot longer than September before you find, you could actually close the books. So idealistic, you'll want to get it done in, in September, but that might mean the comptroller shutting everything off after September. And that might mean that if somebody has something pending, that maybe they have the purchase order, but it's, it's in sort of, not limbo, but it's in transition, that you could just shut everything off after a certain date and then people would lose that money. And you would have to wait till pre-cash is certified to reappropriate. So we've done that in the past and that creates a whole nother set of projects. So waiting a little longer doesn't hurt anything. It actually helps many of the different departments in the city. Books are, I think, you know, I'm talking to David LaPlante, he just runs when he sees me because he's just, he's, he's, he's really straight out. So a lot of this comes from, you know, their office as well. So they're moving.
How close are we to what happened several years ago with the state coming in and saying, you're not going to send us the chapter seventy check?
Yeah, they, they cannot send it, but we, we have, we internally have the money, so we just write out the check. We're not close to that at all. No, they, they can just say, we're not going to send you a check, but that doesn't mean you're not going to get it. It just means we just funded internally, that's all. But, well, the books have to be in order, in order for us to certify, in order to give it to the state.
You know, it just takes a long time.
Well, if we had, honestly, the answer is, if we had more staff in those departments, they're working with one or two people, i- if that. If we had more staff, everything would move quicker. Adding more staff is very expensive and not something we can afford. So we have, we take a little longer, but, um, work gets done and, um, and again, that's just more money that we can't afford. We don't have an assistant treasurer, we don't have an assistant comptroller, we don't have assistants for any department other than clerk's office and, and that's it. And so everyone's working off themselves and with some clerical staff.
Would this be the right point to bring up the federal impact aid?
Sure.
So I just want to remind you that we have a December thirty first deadline for that. My understanding is the school department has sent over the request to create the grant line and reclassify expenses. We just, those have to be done before December thirty first or we lose that money.
I think we explained everything. We met with the D O R and, like, on the E rate, I think was explained, that that's revenue in, that's gotta be revenue in.
Yeah, no, talking about E rate, that's in progress.
And the E rate is, is a certain thing. And we, we, we sort of explained the process, the D O R went over it. Because it's even new to them, we went over the process, everybody agreed on it. And as long as everybody follows the process, we're, we're fine. We have no issue.
Right, we just want to make sure that we're meeting.
We're not holding anything up. So as long as we get everything we need, we're all set.
We've given you everything.
We have given you everything you need.
I don't know that. I, I don't know.
I do. It's been reported to us by the, the school department. A week ago, they sent over the, the request for the reclassifications. We just need to make sure that those are.
I've not seen that, so I can't say yes or no. You haven't seen it either. You haven't seen it received on the city side. So I can only say what I know, and that is, I haven't seen it. That's all I know.
All right, well, I don't really care who's seen it or not. I just, it has to be processed before December thirty first or we lose three hundred and seventy eight thousand.
Well, nobody's gonna.
Five hundred and fifty one dollars.
Right, nobody's gonna lose that as long as all the information is in.
And so the information's in, so hopefully we, we can have a report for the next school committee meeting about, you know, hopefully by that point, we know what's been sent.
Yeah, as long, as long as the school department follows all the procedures that were outlined by the department of revenue, there won't be an issue.
And as far as we know, we've done that, so.
Okay.
All right, let's move on. We have subcommittee reports. I know that policy, there was none this week. But we do, when we get down to the action items, have second readings on the policies that we discussed at our last subcommittee meeting. So there's nothing new on policy. Mike, hello, finance?
Finance, we met at six o'clock tonight. We discussed, as you can see from our agenda, the things we just talked about. Plus, we, additionally, we have some warrants to approve. I'm grateful that Nona always volunteers to read that.
Thanks, Mike.
Very good.
Okay, let's begin. Warrant thirteen, these are salary. Warrant thirteen is for five million, fifty three thousand, nine hundred, two dollars and forty nine cents. Warrant fourteen for a hundred and forty four thousand, seven hundred, sixty seven dollars and eighty six cents. Warrant fifteen for two million, two hundred, six thousand, two hundred and seventy one dollars and thirty nine cents. Warrant sixteen for a hundred and ninety thousand, two hundred, sixty four dollars and thirty four cents. Warrant seventeen for two million, six hundred, fifty five thousand, one hundred, thirty four dollars and sixty two cents. Warrant eighteen for a hundred and twenty eight thousand, one hundred and three dollars and sixty six cents. Warrant nineteen for two million, one hundred, eighty three thousand, eight hundred, forty four dollars and fifty cents. Warrant twenty for four hundred, twenty seven thousand, six hundred, forty one dollars and seventy seven cents. Warrant twenty one for two million, two hundred and fifty one thousand, two hundred, eighty five dollars and eighty one cents. And then from the grants and revolving funds, warrant thirteen for a hundred and fifty two thousand, one hundred, eighty three dollars and eighty nine cents. Warrant fourteen for twenty eight thousand, two hundred and seventy eight dollars and fourteen cents. Warrant fifteen is for two hundred and twenty three thousand, twenty one dollars and fifty one cents. Warrant sixteen for sixteen thousand, four hundred, forty six dollars and ninety eight cents. Warrant seventeen for two hundred and twenty two thousand, sixty nine dollars and ninety four cents. Warrant eighteen for four hundred, seventeen thousand, five hundred and seventy eight dollars and fifty one cents. Warrant nineteen for three hundred, twenty one thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars and ten cents. Warrant twenty for three hundred and nineteen thousand, five hundred, sixty six dollars and fifty nine cents. Excuse me. Warrant twenty one for a hundred and seventy thousand, one hundred, thirteen dollars and fifty seven cents.
So, I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, second.
Any comments?
On, um, some of the, you know, on your live reports, I mean, in some areas you've viewed, you've used ninety percent of the total budget. In other areas, there's just very small amounts that have been used. Is there any reason why certain items would be that low, only four percent spent in almost over half, half of the year?
So.
You're back, what's, that's, you're talking about the munis reports, Steve?
Uh huh.
Right, so does that have anything specifically to do with the warrants?
That's separate from the warrants, Steve.
It's finance, yeah. But I, I was just asking the question before.
Right, so we have a motion and a second.
Which is probably about on the warrants.
Okay.
Then we can talk.
That's fine.
Happy to talk about that.
Um, any comments on the warrants? All those in favor? Motion carries. Steve, did you have a question on the findings?
Yeah, well, it, it related to the warrants because there might have been an area that in the warrant was, we were voting on tonight that was going to change this. And I didn't see that, but it's a possibility. Would change things like six point eight percent or we've used.
My understanding is, some of the ones that, there's some reclassification that is still gonna happen here. There's some of these things that are currently in categories that may get moved to grants.
Employee separation cost, we've only used four point seven percent. It went into the half of the year. So even if we double that and add a little bit for the month of December, you're only using ten percent of that ton wide item, which is a hundred thousand dollars. So we've only used maybe five thousand dollars of that.
Employee separation costs last year cost us considerably more than that because if we sever contracts with certain personnel, we have to pay out of a specific line item.
Right.
Or in November, I believe there's any employee that we've had significant expenses incurred from employee separation costs.
So we, we should be looking at that line item as potential use for something after the first part of the year.
Just like we did there last December, when we were underspending what we had appropriated for unemployment compensation.
Or, or we might not be transferring that back to, say, he, depending what kind of a winter we have or whatever. But there are, so there's no issue with some of these. There's nothing that we should be concerned about on employee costs in separation or anything. That's, that's, that's pretty much consistent, predictable.
Salary wages are much easier to predict than, say, line item, well, the line item that the finance committee questioned was, was the maintenance of equipment. Maintaining, uh, fluid vehicles and the equipment that we have in the schools. We don't know what's gonna break down.
And on, for instance, substitutes for long term, we're really low on that. We're, we're pretty consistent, but it would look like we're good, you know, we're spending at the predicted level on short term substitutes. Do we anticipate us to, I mean, at five point seven, the funding that was appropriated for long term substitutes is all we've used out of a budget of about three hundred and twenty thousand. So we've only used maybe twenty thousand dollars for that line item.
You're getting that in area of the calendar year that you start seeing more subs.
We have quite a few.
The substitute expenses historically have been small through Christmas and then in the spring.
Your short term are consistent with the, I mean, if you keep spend, if we keep spending at that rate, we're okay. But the one that's off is the long term.
Right, but there's, there's many pending pregnancies.
I, I don't know that. That's why I'm asking, you know that? Okay, so you're, you're expecting to spend that much long term? Do you know what you spent last year? It doesn't give a year to date or.
Historically, we spent about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Total, between the both?
Between the two.
Okay, so that, we, we should see additional spending. So that five point seven expended should, should go up, you think?
Absolutely. What you also may notice in the column prior to the actual available funds is that we don't encumber substitutes.
What's that?
We don't encumber what we anticipate for substitutes. We can easily put in the balance of that three twenty and twenty five thousand dollars is encumbered, in which I'm one hundred percent. But that's one of those areas where we don't purposely encumber the funds. We do it on a pay as you go basis, so we know throughout the year what we're spending.
Okay.
And I think that, just like we historically do, we can transfer line items if we're underutilizing it in one area and need to supplement it in another area.
I understand that. That's, the question is that we.
You can see the bottom line is we're right about ninety nine point nine percent. So it's just, there will be need to move things around. The bottom line is we're kinda right where we said we'd be.
But I want to know this now so that I can start thinking of the things that we need to spend money on based on the, the, you know, the capital improvements in those areas. If we end up finishing with any surplus at all based on, we don't know what the heating and, and cooling season, you know, the heating season's gonna bring with electricity and heat. So I just want to be prepared for that.
You, you may want to know, or you may not, that the one line item that we're really not spending at the budgeted is line item twelve, one oh, superintendent. She's only spent five point three percent for a lot of expense budget so far.
Okay, that was it. Thank you.
Mike, do you have anything else to report on the thing at this point?
Nope.
At this point, we're gonna move on to approval in a minute. If someone would like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve for minutes from November nineteenth.
On second, and we have a second. Any additions, corrections, arrows, comments? Chris, you're like that.
I think they were perfect.
That's why I'm grateful. All right, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Um, we're gonna move on to action items, and these are the second readings of the policies. If someone could make a motion for each of these policies?
I'll make a motion for a second reading of these policies. Want to read the file numbers?
Yes, please.
File, first one would be file G B G B A regarding, do I, do I name them also? Employee arrest. Then there's also file G B E C slash A D B, drug and alcohol pre-workplace. G B E B B, staff conduct with students. Uh, A C A B, non-discrimination harassment policy and grievance procedures on title, title eleven? Is it, that's eleven, right? Title two, uh, title two, title six, and title nine. And I believe that would be it.
Excellent, do I have a second? Thank you. Anybody have any comments?
No, I'm just gonna approve.
This is all worded as recommended by the lawyer.
Right, yeah, yeah. We, we saw all those in the original.
All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. We're going to move on to new and old business. I have one item for new business. We have a request from the mayor's office to, on the night of inauguration, to move our organizational meeting prior to the inauguration as opposed to after the inauguration. It is a sort of landmark inauguration for the mayor, and we're expecting some dignitaries to attend. And that would afford everybody the opportunity to socialize, you know, afterwards without having to worry about rushing to get to our organizational meeting.
Yeah, people come to the inauguration, and then we go upstairs to do our, and you leave, you're leaving people that you invited to come watch you get sworn in downstairs while we're upstairs to our meeting. If there's a conflict with scheduling and, and people have work or you don't get back till eight, just let me know, that's fine. But I was just figuring, if people come and you want to be able to socialize with them and, and we always run upstairs after we leave all these people there. And the reason they came was the cookies and I was such a.
No, I, no, I, I know that, I've heard that. Is there any legal ramifications on us deciding who's gonna be on what committee before we're sworn in?
No. I'm just asking. I mean, we're already elected, we're already in the.
No, I know.
And what I would propose is the time would be like five forty five because that would give us a forty five minute window prior to the event starting at six thirty. So I wanted to make sure that was something doable for everyone. I did talk to Sue, and she is able to do that.
I think it makes sense to do it that way, honestly, so that's very.
I like the idea.
And the cookies are always gone by the time I get downstairs after, so there's another good reason.
Well, you didn't scoop up and, and after the organization.
We're rushing upstairs.
I brought, I brought a plate full last time, yeah.
So everybody's okay with moving the meeting?
Yeah.
So we will do that, okay, Mayor? And if you can let Wendy know that we're all set to do that, that would be appreciated. All right, does anybody else have anything for new or old business?
Just, oh, sorry, I was just gonna say, you know, I enjoyed the play. I thought it, I thought it went well. You know, I, I attended on Saturday night, and there seemed to be a good audience and was good. I look forward to the other plays.
And on top of the musical, they also competed for the Massachusetts Educational Theater Guild Scholarship competitions. And Abby and Emma Waterhouse, who were Little Sally and.
Another one?
Hope.
Hope.
They came in third place in the scene partners competition. And Chris George was an honorable mention from the Massachusetts Educational Theater Guild for scenic design. And she also designed the set for your encounter.
Wow, so, yeah, it's great. Awesome, thank you.
I want to pick a bone with those judges because Amy and her sister have been at this since they were like this big. I got an issue with those judges.
We attended the Friday night, and I, the play, and it was, it was, I'm always stunned by the singing capacities of the, of the actors. It was good. I, I, we both enjoyed it very much. He was, he was impressive.
Okay, anybody else have anything?
Yes, we would like to begin to, no pun intended, but chip away at some of the safety issues around the schools. For instance, when you leave here, a lot of elderly come here to eat. And when you leave here, look, the walkways have settled and the granite is sticking up. That's a trip risk, a high trip risk. The students did a really good job over here at the loading dock. I mean, it's a small example of, you know, so if they want to get into like finishing concrete, we would work with them and also supply the, the materials. So either way, I know that the, there are a couple of different trade programs around the area that teach students to do finish tray, uh, finish concrete. But either way, some of these areas have to be corrected, the stairs on the side here, some of the rail. We just have to start looking at some of these areas. We don't want anybody to get hurt. So little by little, if we can get a list superintendent of, with the facilities manager, just to, so in the spring we can, when we do sidewalks, we can bid those in to the, so if the students want to learn that sort of concrete finishing, that's fine, we'll work with them on that. And, but if not, we, we really gotta get some of these things to.
I have a safety area at Doyle Field I would like to.
Let, let us know.
Because I went flying and a couple of other people also took over it.
We don't want people hurt. It's, you know, obviously, nobody wants to pay our insurance. But more importantly, we don't want anybody hurt. And a lot of people come through here and every time they walk out the door. So we did, you know, seven thousand feet of sidewalk last year. So we, we did all around northwest school and all that. But as I visit some of the schools, there are some areas that just need to be addressed. So we want to try to include those into our bid packages.
So if anybody in the community sees any of those kinds of issues, let us know for everyone's safety sake.
And they need to be handicap, handicap compliant.
Yep. All right, at this point, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second, second, Mike. All those in favor? Have a good night.